Yeah.
I knew I was gonna forget.
These are practice new voices now next time for the government.
I hope for crying out loud, I'm sorry.
I'll be right back to see. Yeah, she didn't come until the council meeting.
Right, right. Rap music.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Grousman.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner.
All things accounted for? Introduction to media, any media pop in? Okay. Anyone wishing to speak before the city council tonight on any second matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and will need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. To use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of the hand. Reminder for council, please speak into your microphone when talking so everyone can hear you.
Especially you. Yes, okay, I will.
Public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Are there any public comments? Okay. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of council and people in the audience, I wanted to take a moment to explain why the older man in the back of the room is not sitting. Oh, I'm sorry, there are several of you. But the one I'm talking about is Brian Elliott. He is our outgoing community development director and our new community development director is Christie. We've also added a couple new staff members. One of those is Brandon Manderas who works with both Jamie and Christie in community development. And we're very excited to have her. And another new team member, I'm gonna sneeze, is Lindsay. Lindsay has a unique position, we kind of recrafted this position in which she works for Tammy and Finance and does payroll and financial accounting. But she also is going to be an assistant to Melanie. And why is that, you ask? Well, thank you for asking. This is, happens to be Diane Harris, our human resource manager and city recorder, last city council meeting because she's retiring. And so she will be missed. But this is it for her and I asked the mayor to just take a time to introduce some of the new faces here. And Brian, next council meeting will be your last, right? Yeah, so you guys, make sure you bring the gazoo's at the next council meeting. They'll both be very much missed. The thing I'm excited about is that we've been very blessed with some very, very, very good people who come up behind them. We really stick with a principal philosophy of trying to promote from within. So Christie has been with the city for how many years, 10 years? And it's her turn to step up. And that's kind of how we did it. Aaron had been with the city for a number of years. He still hasn't stepped up, but he has the time. But yeah, that's what we like to do and that's what we will do. And we're gonna do everything we can to keep them forever. So, thank you everyone and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. On to presentation, is that happening?
Sure.
Okay, homeless youth solution initiative. Are they here tonight? Onto consistent and minutes from May 8, 2023 regular meeting.
I knew.
Because I can't write this.
I'm looking at second group agenda as presented, any discussion?
Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On the council business, public hearing, supplemental budget adjustment fiscal year 2022-2023. We'll open the public hearing. And staff report, finance director.
Mayor Sumner, counselors, Tammy Trebridge, finance director. And you will please see before we even get into the staff report that I've given you a corrected copy, paper copy of that resolution 2023.04, which correctly reflects the supplemental budget that was run in the newspaper and the changes that need to happen. There was quite a bit of changing and restructuring and numbering changes. And in the process of that, the wrong resolution got attached and put in the package. So please recognize that that is a resolution we're talking about on this public hearing and will be part, the one that you will either approve or whatever motion happens. This is a public hearing for resolution 2023.04 for interested parties to speak regarding the proposed changes to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. As of the hearing, council being asked to consider approving resolution 2023.04 to adopt supplemental budget adjustment for the fiscal year as described herein. So this is to correct resolution 2022-13 from November. The additional funding for urban renewal was already approved. We approved it at that point in time to purchase this corner lot over here on Everett. But at the time, and I'm blaming this completely on my inexperience with funding balances and what's available to use for contingency and for adjustments between contingency and unappropriated, even though we still have plenty of money, it wasn't in the correct fund to pull that money from. So this is going to correct that budget adjustment and take it from water and wastewater reserve funds, which have enough money in their contingency funds. And we're, after talking, Jerry and I chose to use the reserve funds because those are set aside for either capital improvement or property acquisition. And we felt that it was in the same spirit of use that those funds are already designated for. And there will be loan documents written up and that loan will be repaid as tax increment money dancing starts flowing back into urban renewal. Those will be the first things where it will pay. This was completely on me and.
No, it isn't. It's my responsibility, you need to know that. I know that you can't tap unappropriating fund balance funds and I missed it when she gave it to me for approval. So she's just trying to be kind, but at the end of the day, it's my responsibility. And I, I just missed it.
Thank you. So after the public hearing, your options are to either adopt this resolution 2023.04 supplemental budget or not to adopt. And after considering any public comment, I'm hoping that you will move to adopt this budget adjustment.
Okay, any public comment? During then, we'll close public hearing. Move on to resolution number 2023.04 supplemental budget adjustment fiscal year 2022-2023. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept to resolution 2023.04 supplemental budget. I guess, but as specified by Tammy, correcting Jerry's. Write down on my saw.
I have a second.
I'll say.
Motion in the second to approve resolution 2023.04 supplemental budget adjustment 2023-2022-23 as presented. Any discussion? The vote.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On the public hearing, state revenue sharing, open public hearing. And on the staff report, finance director.
Mayor and counselors, and Tammy Trebridge. This is a public hearing for resolution 2023.05 for interested parties to speak regarding the city's election to receive state shared revenue for the fiscal year 2023-24. After the hearing, council is being asked to consider approving that resolution. And there's also a correction on this staff report. So I was evidently having quite a day. It says, this is the second of two, but actually this is the first of two required public hearings on.
It is the second.
It was corrected. Yeah, it was. It is the second, the first one was done prior to the budget. I am correcting a correction, I'm sorry, I will get my stuff together. On the city's election to receive state shared revenue. Cities and counties that levy property taxes are eligible for periodic distributions from money raised from state taxes on motor vehicle fuels, tobacco products, and alcoholic beverages. These distributions from the state of Oregon are based on formula established by the state. The rules governing these distributions are part of Oregon revised statute. For fiscal year 2023-24, these revenues are projected to be about $115,000. And after public hearing, your options are to either adopt the resolution to receive state revenues or not to adopt.
Do I have any public comment? Okay, I'll close public hearing. Resolution number 2023.05 election to receive state revenue sharing, do I have a motion?
Move that we adopt resolution 2023.06.
Right.
Correction. Six is below it. I'm gonna say the same thing. Oh, I mean, I mean, yes.
Can you repeat it, repeat it?
Okay, I move that we adopt resolution 2023.05 as. I shall say.
And a motion in the second to approve resolution 2023.05 election to receive state revenue sharing as presented. On to resolution number 2023.06 certifying city services, staff report.
No.
Back, back to the end.
Oh, you're gonna go all the way?
Right, we'll do both of them.
Oh, perfect. Again, mayor and counselor, sorry about that.
Was that okay because it didn't say mayor or mayor?
What is being asked of council is to approve resolution 2023.06 certifying city services for the purposes of receiving state revenue sharing funds, which we were just talking about in the prior resolution. This is the second of two resolutions that are required by the state of Oregon in order to receive those funds. After holding a public hearing on the use of those funds, city needs to adopt this resolution certifying that the city of Sutherland provides at least four of the seven qualifying municipal services that's listed in the resolution and those services are police protection, fire protection, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitation, sewer, storm sewers, planning, zoning and subdivision control, and one or more other utility services. And we, of course, provide.
Madam Mayor. In terms of proper protocol, we need a motion and a second that the council has elected to receive state revenue sharing.
We just need to vote.
On the 2023.05.
Sounds good. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Now, can I have a motion for resolution 2023.06 certifying city services? Any discussion? Then vote for that.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On the public hearing, adoption of 2023-24 city budget, open public hearing, staff report.
Mayor and counselors, Tammy Trebridge, finance director, and this is a public hearing for resolution 2023.07 for interested parties to speak regarding the approved budget for fiscal year 2023-24. After the hearing, council is being asked to consider approving that resolution to adopt the approved budget for the fiscal year 2023-24 as approved by the budget committee. The budget committee approved the budget in the amount of $34,759,889 on May 15, 2023. This is the second of two required public hearings that must be conducted prior to council considering the approved budget for adoption. After the public hearing, to either adopt, the options are to either adopt that regulation 2023.07 and also levying property taxes for the fiscal year or not to adopt.
Any public comment? The closed public hearing. And resolution 2023.07 adoption of 2023-24 city budget, do I have a motion? Motion to approve resolution 2023.07. I'm saying. Okay, a motion and second to approve resolution 2023.07 adoption of the 2023-24 city budget as presented, any discussion?
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Under resolution number 2023.08, property vacation, South Calhoun, staff report.
Madam Mayor, I need the intervening man, so does Tammy. So this piece of property that is being transferred from accounting to one celebrity of its mine, but it wasn't when this started. But in order for, you'll see that the largest piece was Susan Murphy and we were just required to go along. I have a conflict and I just want you to know that. Part of the public record.
One little sliver of it is also fine.
Right.
Mayor, city council, Jamie Church, here's the planner. Mayor, city council. Jamie Church, here's the planner. And what we have before you, as Jerry and Tammy mentioned, this is kind of the process of the ORS. And there is a portion of a piece of property that is county owned right of way and then additional parts for what they're doing is taking the unapproved portion and dividing them on the center of this four property, there's Nielsen, Gillon, and Murphy. So this is actually finalizing that concept for. But we are still maintaining the distinct part of that. So with that resolution, my options are either amend and approve resolution 2023.08 as amended, not approve resolution 2023.08 or approve, I'm assuming, the resolution 2023.08.
Do I have a motion? Make a motion to approve resolution 2023.08. I have a motion in the second to approve resolution 2023.08 property vacation, South Calhoun, as presented, any discussion?
I mean. Why don't you just call her Debbie like you have everything else?
Exhibits. A portion of it is tax law 101 on one of the cessers map. And what happens, like that's the biggest compliment and that whole thing is 21 zero. And that portion goes 50-50 to the adjacent property owners, the part we go to Trebridge. That will improve their entire easement, so the county will not have to cross over to his property. Of course, you go to Murphy's and then as you work your way up to Gillon and Nielsen, we're talking like. That they're just.
Is the county wanting to get rid of this just so they don't have to maintain it?
Possibly, and I think one of the properties was approached because of the easements that, you know, three people access all that easement and it's crossing it. So just the hassle of having to maintain and galley. Think of that way when the county's not going to do like 10th of an acre.
Any other question?
We approved 23.
Murphy and Nielsen's?
Not Gillon's.
Yeah, so for the ORS, they've already started the process that is counted, but.
All right.
Okay. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Dagel. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On the purchase approval, right of way mower for public works maintenance, staff report.
We are going to ask you for the approval for a purchase for a new John Deere 6610 right away. The two flat loaded on the back. Our old right of way mower is 30 years old. And it was a good old machine, but it is. I mean, the most time broke down now if it is running and this time of year. Summer when we get plants about tall grass, berries, whatever. Yeah, I can't be broke down for two more weeks. Got some bids. Songs are machinery out of Thelon who does the source well. Work the same, that's their price, 175,395.04. It suggested maybe we go through the purchase. Okay, 16610. Down lower and maybe 175.
Does local.
Why is my wife here? I'll second the motion.
All right. A motion and a second to approve purchase of the new John Deere 6610 M door from Portwell. The amount of 175,395.04 as presented, any discussion?
Are there other options? This type of mower? This type of mower.
I'm going to have Erin go ahead and go, I'm going to try and answer this for him. So he's going to just.
But.
So he had, these mowers are very expensive, obviously, a source well contract is, a source well contractor is somebody that the state has. Researched and they have a procurement contract with the state, so it's devices going out and getting bits. He also checked with John Deere directly, who has a similar mower, not exactly the same, and the price came in within two thousand dollars of the same thing. The problem with John Deere is that they will not get that unit for a year. So it wouldn't be available to work through this summer. And this Sansray mower is available and would be here as soon as we could write them the down. So we do have a reasonable understanding that this is the price that we're going for. And an approved contractor's price to the state for it.
Are there, are there city properties that require that?
Yeah, lots of them. Alley's.
So they're, they've been using the one that they've had for thirty years, and it's very necessary that this scope of the mowing is. Quite intense, I'm sure you've seen, I mean, just adding Ford's pond, we've had this discussion about probably needs to pull, we need a full time parts person, but a mower like this. That wasn't breaking down would help with the mowing load that is becoming quite a burden. Ford's pond and on both sides of that trail and.
I just wanted to make a comment. Yes, these bores are very specialized. Not only, it's not like just a long word, an arm on it, so back down blackberries. Clean. Brush away from stop signs. All that stuff, that equipment. This time of year, the firteach is really nasty. Grass and that stuff is starting to dry. And then we gotta go to work. That's probably.
I would assume also with the size of this mower, that you could accomplish the same amount of territory in less time.
Yes, it's very efficient. Yeah.
Let's face it, nothing's cheap now.
I would just say it's the same kind of mower that they're using on all the freeway systems. Everybody has seen the mower job.
All right.
Counselor Whitaker?
Aye.
Counselor Grousman?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Woods? Counselor Dagel?
Aye.
Mayor Sumner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under commission and committee appointment. Yes, we're asking to. filling a vacancy on the Park Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission. For the Park Advisory, we have Rebecca Todd Miller. Is Rebecca here? Would you like to come up and introduce yourself and say a few things?
My name is Rebecca Todd Miller, I'm here last year from Rover. And I'd like to say what a pleasure it's been to attend some meetings for the city and. Especially this, this meeting tonight, the accountability is, is really awesome, and I'd love to be a part of. You know, something that's been here forever and not trying to come in and. Recreate the wheel, trying to learn a lot from great people. I'm kind of bummed that Mr. Elliot's going to be gone, that he comes like, you just got to follow around. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for stepping up. Oh, yeah.
Well, would my, you might tell them what else you do about.
Oh, um, I, I did get elected to the Southern Valley Rec Committee as the vice president of that league this year. I got two littles, one medium, and one large child. I figured that was a great place to sort of thank my hat. And, and then when we first moved here, y'all were having a meeting about the complex. And I told my kids, I might not be able to help, you know, build that for them, but, you know, waiting for their kids. Yeah, sports is a very, very, very important thing in our family, and then we're also learning that farming, and it's a very important thing in our family here in Southern. If anybody have any questions for me? Yes, thank you. Yes, thank, thank you.
You say on behalf of the people that don't know. We don't have anybody of the city that is involved in all the recreation that we see going on out there, the soccer. And baseball, and all that stuff that's going on, and that's all done by this nonprofit organization. It would be a lot, we would pay a lot of expense if we had. Form a recreation.
We could do them all together, we also have, John Banducci is here as well. Thank you.
I can do that for you. My former neighbor. There's both of them.
John Banducci, and I stepped into a horse nest. And my, my coming here to, I really feel a little bit honored because. I'm really concerned about Southern, who wants to be the best place in the world eventually, we'll get there. It's getting there more and more all the time with the fine people you have, and I've worked with. Christie and they knew. They've just been fantastic to work with, and I worked at Roque for North Plumber Company, and part of our plan, I was their technical director. I was in charge of all the raw materials that came in, the biggest particle for planning in the world. Also, the natural gas line, I would say. I did all the maintenance on the line, not physically, but I had to make sure all the safety standards were followed. And everything was done properly, and you can get a lot of trouble with the natural gas. Uh, I moved here in Southern about twelve, twelve years ago. And I really love the community. I'm on the HOA board of Fairwood Street. I'm not the president, I didn't want to be the president, we have a good one. And so, and my concern was anything else, just to do a good job, you know, where does I go? There's no particular problem with that. So that's the need question to have with that.
What is your position?
What?
What is your position?
Position? Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm here and.
Appreciate you applying, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have Rebecca Todd Miller, who's applied for the Park Advisory Commission. Term ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty four, and John Banducci applying for the planning commission. With a term ending either twelve thirty one twenty four or twelve thirty one twenty five.
Twenty six, it was twenty six. Oh, my bad.
Twenty six.
Make a motion that we appoint Teresa Todd Miller.
Rebecca.
Rebecca.
She was done for the one ending twenty four or twenty six?
Twenty six is what it says.
That's what I put down here. So these are in their packets.
I do. Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Rebecca. Miller for Park Advisory Commission, and Todd Banducci for Planning Commission. John. Debbie.
Debbie and Debbie.
Good one I had, volunteers makes that very special. We give so much ground to volunteers. We know we could afford you, you know, really cool, honest people, yes, and I appreciate it, thank you for doing. At all, so.
Counselor Whitaker?
Aye.
Counselor Grousman?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counselor Dagel?
Aye.
Mayor Sumner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have a city manager report.
Yeah. I just wanted to. Express some possibly concerning news, when my wife came in a few minutes ago. She came here to ask Erin to get to the hospital right away, it's down, it's been rushed there. If you don't know, Angus Swan is a legend in this area for his mother's. And anyway, it's kind of sad, so all your prayers go out for Angus this evening, I don't know what. Oh, Angus is a son, yeah, sorry, yeah, I didn't say Debbie. So I just wanted you to know, and please be praying for him. Sid's a great man.
Under council comments, remember, monthly meeting time is limited, please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Counsel Whitaker?
I think it's great that the father's house is usually. What do you have, Joe? A hash shell, thank you.
Ban shell, we can call it ban.
Thing will learn part, I think it's great, somebody. The other thing is, I just wanted to mention something to update. At Parks Committee, Advisory Committee meeting, we kind of visit from the people, from the Unqua Bello. Bello means bicycle. They're the ones that designed and did the trail. Hoover Creek. Finished that they developed on. And they gave the one, actually rotary that. The first part, yeah, the rotary, they did a second. Anyway, so what they wanted to know was what we were going to do with. The park, partly park. And they had some preliminary ideas about how we could put a trail. Down, so that people could run device. And we said, well, that's what we, here's what's women need about it. They design it, they build it, they supply all the machinery to do the work, and they take care of it once.
They're hired.
So we said, well, give us a plan. So I just wanted to update you on something, I mean, partly part the center for years, years, except for the dog park, not, not the. We'll show you the drawing when you're ready.
Down at the lower of their swings.
It'll be between the park where the swing is and the dog park, that big grass. Counsel Grousman?
You're old, oh, come. I would like to stay with her. Debbie. And Brian, and there are seats that will be coming available here in the next year.
In the county.
Luckily, she doesn't live here, so. What's your name?
Um, I second. I hope I get to see her every now and at least. You're still my family, so, yeah. You don't love each other.
Thank you.
Counsel Wood. I just want to say thank you for those who've. I set on these committees, because as Counsel Dagel said, that you know, all the things that we do in the city couldn't be done without the volunteers that. You know, made those things happen, and then of course, the wonderful staff that we have that helped facilitate those things, so thank you for that. And all the extra work that's getting put into, music got hatched out, and the other things that we have going on, so I think this is going to be a pretty busy, big summer. Counsel Dagel?
Well, I have a couple things. First of all, I'd like to say, I think the lineup for the fans for summer are really great. We've been good with that, that's going to be, I've got to do a lot more than. Damn, I have a kind of have a question.
Yeah.
But I got corrected.
Okay, that makes three, but do not know who got in real.
You listen to country?
I'm not a country.
Yes, got a lot of hits.
They're old country.
Well, my other point. I'm imagining before, but I've always felt kind of frustrated, we can't discuss things for a council. I mean, we're kind of prohibited from talking about things away from here. And we can't discuss anything that's brought up before, voting tells us that motion. So my question is, why do we have to fall, follow the Robert's rules of order, why can't we?
You just, you just have a workshop. That's our workshop, put it on the agenda as a workshop discussion, and that's all, that's why I don't. It's up to you guys.
When it's, they have to have the motion first. And then the discussion.
But, yeah, I understand that, but if you're thinking about it, there's seven of here. Well, two people are gonna already be for it, because we're gonna have a second and a motion.
You just have to have that on it, you have to put it before you discuss.
That's what Robert's rules, yeah.
Okay, looking back, and I don't think anything's ever got voted down.
Because we're so wonderful.
Anyway, personally, I.
I guarantee you just ask the mayor to say, hey, I'd like to have greater discussion around this thing before we vote on it, can we do a workshop? And we just make it an agenda item, and we dedicate.
That's for a workshop on other issues, but we didn't do it, but.
We, I'm still. Are you talking about the homeless thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do, if, if the council wants to do a workshop on it.
Yeah, you know, we could.
It's your call, though.
Well, we didn't.
We did have one. We had a big discussion about.
Yeah, well, I couldn't, and I was not allowed, yeah.
Oh, that was when we had the community meeting over.
Talk about anything or.
You know, when you're elected, lots of people run for election and realize, oh crap. I remember Adam Sarnasky ran because of water rates, and he got in, and he realized, oh my gosh, I, I can't do what I thought I could do. It's.
Call me one.
Well, actually.
I get three others on the line.
I was told that we actually couldn't.
You can do. I can't call Debbie and have conversations about a topic, and then I can't call you and have.
You can't, well, Chad's here, he can answer it, but you can't do the.
A forum.
Create a forum, or to.
Appearance of a forum.
Chad? Educate that.
So there's two different ways that a meeting can occur, the first is when you have a forum actually physically in the same place. That are either deliberating towards a decision or making a decision. And the second is what's called a serial meeting. And the second is what's called a serial meeting, which is a series of communications. And that can be either phone calls, in-person meetings, emails, any kind of communication where there's a series of communications. Where a forum is deliberating or making a decision through those series of communications. So for example, if one counselor talks to two others and then shares their views with a fourth counselor. Now you've got a forum who's sort of deliberating through that one person serving as a conduit. But as long as you're not sharing views, there's nothing that stops one member of the council. From going to each member, each other member of the council to say, here's how I feel about this issue. You just can't be used as a conduit to allow the other councils to communicate with each other through you, if that makes sense.
But in terms of transparency, I really want to encourage you, if there's a, if you want. To hold a special meeting in the afternoon, evening or at a council meeting. Talk about any one subject and really get to the bottom of it. You, that's their prerogative.
It seems kind of, kind of protective of a lot of things to make it good station. I'd like to hear other people's opinion and why you're thinking what they do. It makes a difference on what, what I do. I want to hear what other people think.
Well, if you'd like to do that, what, no.
Well, I'd like to have. Open enough so we could just do that when. Anyhow, I said my piece. That's all I've got.
Okay, Aaron texted me.
Thank you, Chad.
Uh, I have a few things. Uh, one thing is, is I think it would be really. Nice if we could come up with the name of our. Because I, I keep hearing several people throughout our town calling it all these different names. Clamshell. Hash shell, Harley. I love the hash shell, but I'm, um, so I think that we should come up with one and name it that and make it official. So that everybody calls it. And how we do that, I'm open for suggestions. I know that, didn't you guys want some? Someone bring, give you some. Suggestions? This better become.
That may be what Brian's trying to do. So I received an email from an individual about this topic and. They suggested the Valerian, which now we would like pepper and like the Valerian or the city of Southern. So I was gonna discuss this tomorrow.
Right.
Central Park the next day. And people still want to put the hash over there. So I said, if you're gonna put a shell in there, do ban shell so it's different and not copying Roseburg.
Yeah, it does look like a shell, though.
I'm in agreement with this. And at one point we did discuss it where council can come back with the name. Go forward with that. So this was just a suggestion that I received.
Sounds like a sleep aid.
It is kind of.
I don't know. I say keep it in Central Park Advent Stadium and that way it covers everyone. And that's what we've been using.
Or simple language.
And everyone's.
Yeah.
But look at all the events that we've already been having this year.
But in that stage, sounds like you don't have a date.
Can you say hash shell on stage?
Lot of. Well, that's what we were doing before.
Well, why don't we just do this? Each counselor come up with the name and bring it to the next council meeting. Uh, see how that. Wait, sort of, just be kind of fun. Well, but like Gary is saying, if, if it did it, we could put it in an agenda. I mean. Just to spring it on and make everybody vote on it right now, this certain moment.
But we've been using that for the last year.
Well, uh. I, I would venture to guess not a single counselor likes that.
I think something actually that's leading to. What it is of just. Been a good stage. What that way comes across. You're coming to a classy, in fun and beautiful place.
Well, I'm a big Dallas Cowboy fan. They call their facility the Star.
Oh. Oh. Oh, that's good. Grand Central event stage.
No, just Grand Central State. Yeah.
Central Park.
Central Park.
I like. I like it. Snappy.
Yeah. And write that one down. The other one is, um, congratulations to all the graduates. I think everybody's graduated this last week. And, um. Congratulations, Diane and Brian. I'm gonna miss you guys. Sorry to see you leave.
Thank you.
Lots of, uh, your expertise in your city. And last thing is I want to invite everyone to our first annual prepare fair this Thursday afternoon, one to five at Central Park. Um, for all of police and fire and. Learning to prepare for all our citizens. Hopefully it'll be a good success.
Well, interestingly, I'm a citizen. I haven't heard about it. So. Maybe yes.
Yesterday?
Yeah, so I don't think a lot of people out there would.
And we're gonna be on the radio Wednesday morning.
And there's flyers that businesses in town.
It's in the city bulletin, right?
I think it was in the newspaper. It would be on Central Park. At the Grand Central City. Yeah. In the Hatville. Alright, I think that's everything I have. How good evening.
How about Central Station?
That sounds like a brother.
Yeah.
Yeah.
During seven fifty-three. Thank you, Chad. Good night. You know, it's funny.